Good evening, everyone. Welcome. I would like to begin by acknowledging that we are in Migmoggi in the District of Sabaginagadi, the ancestral and unceded territory of the Migma people. On behalf of council, I would like to congratulate Michelle Glasgow on her election win, making her the first female chief of the Sabaginagadi First Nation. We look forward to working together with Chief Glasgow and Sabaginagadi Council. Also, I would like to mention why our flags at the Lloyd E. Matheson Center were lowered last week. We recognize the passing of former Warden John Patterson. John was first elected to East Hans Council in 1994 and served eighteen years as councillor. He also served as Warden from 2004 until 2012. Former councillor Fred Cannavon also passed away in late October. Fred served on East Hans Council for twenty-three years and was deputy warden on two separate occasions. We thank John and Fred for their contributions to East Hans, and our condolences are with their families. I would now ask for a moment of silent contemplation. I would now ask for the approval of or amendments to the agenda. Moved and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary, motion is carried. I would now look for the approval of the minutes of October the eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-two, regular meeting of council for policy and October twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-two, regular meeting of council.
Move.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary, motion is carried. And at this time, I would like to extend a public thank you to Mr. McNoble. Council would like to recognize Mr. McNoble, who recently retired as Chair of the East Hans Fire Service Association, a position he has held since the group's incorporation in two thousand and eleven, and from council's fire advisory committee. As a founding member of Fire Advisory Committee established in July nineteen ninety-four, he is the only member to have served since inception, a phenomenal twenty-eight-plus years. Through the work, through his work on these committees, Mac has helped shape our fire service into the professional organization that it is today. Our community is grateful to Mac and his wife Anne for their service, and we wish Mac well in his retirement from these official committee duties. The new Chair of the East Hans Fire Service Association is Chief Tyler Dophney of Nine Mile River and District Volunteer Fire Department, and we certainly wish him well as he takes on these duties. Thank you. Next, we have a long service award. I'll turn it over briefly to the C A O.
Thank you, Madam Warden. As you know, for council's benefit, at the NSFM conference this fall, the Warden was honored with a twenty-five-year long service award and was part of a ceremony at the NSFM conference. We do have one other councillor who is receiving a long service award from the NSFM, and I'll turn it back over to the Warden for that presentation.
Thank you. At this time, we recognize councillor Keith Rhino for twenty-five years of service on municipal council. Keith and I started out together as rookies on this council, and it's hard to believe that enough time has gone past that now we're the old guys, so to speak. Although, as councillor Rhino is fond of reminding me, he is younger than I am. So it gives me a great pleasure to recognize Keith for his dedication and hard work of the last twenty-five years on council and certainly congratulate him on everything he's accomplished. And having said that, I would like to present him with his certificate of recognition from the Union of Nova Scotia Municipalities.
Twenty-five years, but those are the people I represent, and those are the people I thank that why I'm here.
Next, we will move to correspondence for information. You've had this in front of you, councillors, is there any item in correspondence for information that anyone wishes to bring forward? Seeing none, we will move on to correspondence for decision. We have three items. The first item is with regards to the Uniak District Civic Centre and C A O.
Thank you, Madam Warden. If you'll recall, we had a discussion a few years ago about a, an amount of money that was sitting with a community group in Mount Uniak, and they had approached us at that time about taking those funds in trust until the Uniak District Civic Centre idea kind of comes to light. They have sent us a formal request to receive those funds, and it would be appropriate at this time, if council wishes, to create a fund for the Uniak District Civic Centre and to have that, those funds brought into the municipality's coffers for holding for that community group to work to take place.
Deputy Warden.
Thank you, Madam Warden. Yes, I'll move that the municipality accepts the funds from the Uniak District Civic Centre Committee, the sum of thirty-two thousand dollars, and hold it in trust until such time another committee takes up the mantle to continue on with the project.
Do we have a seconder?
Eli.
Seconded by councillor Musa. Councillor Musa.
Thank you, Madam Warden. That group worked so hard for this idea, and they did a good study, I think, for viability and stuff. So I think staff should reach them to get that study because it was very detailed one, and it costs a lot of money. So if we can use it, it'd be good. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments? Are you ready for the question?
Question.
Question's been called, we'll go to the vote. And the motion is passed unanimously. The next item for correspondence for decision is the agreement between East Hans and the Department of Justice to hire two public service employees at a cost of a hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars a year for two years to reduce the administrative burden on regular members has been finalized. Council should give the C A O authorization to enter into the agreement, which has been posted to the agenda. C A O.
Thank you, Madam Warden. Basically, it's just as you've just introduced the topic. Several months ago, council wrote to the Department of Justice asking for these two positions to be created. We've been working back and forth on an agreement between the province and their federal counterparts and the R C M P locally here. We've come to that agreement. The initial discussion last budget season was that the cost would be a hundred and thirty thousand dollars per year. It's settled in at a hundred and thirty-four, which is still, you know, within what council was comfortable with. So tonight, I'm looking for council authority to enter into this agreement with the R C M P and Department of Justice, I should say.
Councillor Green.
I would move that we enter into the agreement with the Department of Justice for the two public positions.
Seconded by councillor Gerdin Cole, is there any discussion?
Question.
Question's been called, we'll go to the vote. And the motion is passed unanimously. And the final is a letter from the East Hans Fire Service requesting funding to develop a training facility in Knoll. C A O, are you taking this?
Sure, I can, yeah. So councillors, we have had on the books for a number of years, a reserve balance, which was set aside to facilitate a training facility for the East Hans Fire Service. Since that time, Elmsdale has constructed a fire training facility on their property, which is used by the corridor firefighters quite extensively. The group, the East Hans Fire Service Association, which is a group of chiefs that represent all of the fire service, approved at their last meeting to put forward a request to use the balance in that reserve of approximately a hundred and twenty-five dollars to build a training facility for the rural fire departments to use in the Knoll area. The conversation at that meeting was around sort of doing it in a stage, so doing the first phase and then coming back and asking council to keep putting money in reserves to do the second phase. Conversation quickly turned to the rural gas tax funds or a rural fire reserve of some kind. So the request is coming from those chiefs to look at doing the entire project at one time and tapping into another source of funding, which, you know, I think if council wants to move forward with investigating this request, we would look for a motion to prepare a report for committee to say, or sort of to flush out where those other funds would come from and how this would take place and how it would come about for the fire service and East Hans working together.
Councillor Mitchell.
Thank you, Madam Warden. Just a question on the staff report. Would there be a part of that report away for Elmsdale to recoup some of the expense that they put forward on their project?
Through you, Madam Warden. If that was the wish of committee for us to look into that. I do know that the Chief of Elmsdale was there at the meeting and indicated that they weren't looking for that, but if that's something that council wants to look at, we could certainly add that to the report.
As a follow-up with the conversation with Chief Goodman yesterday on the, on the request for the facility in Knoll, Elmsdale wouldn't be, would not accept any funding that would help going forward with the maintenance of what they have. So, so that's my comments for today, and I'll wait for the report.
Would not, or would?
Would, would take any funding that was available for maintenance on the facility used by six departments in the corridor. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Is someone prepared to move a motion that we have staff look at the request and bring us a report next month on how we could perhaps facilitate it? Councillor Mitchell.
I'll make a motion that staff look at the request from the East Hans Fire Service for a training facility in Knoll.
Seconded by councillor Green, is there any discussion on the motion?
Question.
Question's been called, we'll go to the vote.
Is this just capital?
At this time, this would just be a request for capital for this one. And the motion is passed unanimously. And that concludes the correspondence for decision. We'll now move into the committee reports, going first to councillor Rhino for the Police Advisory Committee. Over to you, councillor.
Thank you, Madam Warden. Committee held its regular meeting November the fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-two, in council chambers. The following motions came forward as a result of this meeting. Selection of chairperson and vice-chairperson for the council procedural policy in the Police Advisory Committee Terms of Reference. Bi-annual review of the chair and the vice-chair positions are due. Council Mitchel nominated councillor Rhino for chair for the Police Advisory Committee. Councillor Rhino accepted. Councillor Rhino was appointed chair. Deputy Warden Perry nominated councillor Mcfee as vice-chair of the Police Advisory Committee. Councillor Mcfee accepted. Councillor Mcfee was appointed vice-chair. Police Advisory Committee Members, Member Oath of Office. Councillors Mcfee and Tingley both stood and repeated the Police Advisory Committee Oath of Office, signed the oath document, and returned it to the Assistant Municipal Clerk for their record. Also, R C M P quarterly report on crime prevention. The R C M P presented their quarterly report, including a human resource report, operations update, calls for service report, and crime prevention presentation. So from that, the Police Advisory Committee recommends that council, that council direct staff to schedule a workshop to discuss priorities in support of consultation efforts with the R C M P at one of the extensions or the committee of council meeting dates in January or February. Note, in consultation with the R C M P and public members of the Police Advisory Committee, January nineteenth was booked. So as Chair of the Committee, I do so move.
Moved and seconded, is there any discussion on the motion?
Question.
Question's been called. And the motion is passed unanimously.
And just for a note, the R C M P will be hosting a tour of headquarters facility on Monday, December the fifth, at nine thirty a.m. Madam Warden, that brings you down to my report. As Chair, I move the adoption of this report.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary, motion is carried. Next on our agenda is the Corporate and Residential Services Committee Report. Over to you, Deputy Warden Perry.
Thank you, Madam Warden. The Committee held its regular meeting on November fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-two, in council chambers. The following motions are coming forward as a result of this meeting. Presentation by the Chubanaki Canal Commission. Claire Hepburn, Executive Director of the Chubanaki Canal Commission, and Anne Richard, Research Coordinator from the Chubanaki Cow Commission, gave a presentation on the three-year research and planning transition project to increase awareness, access, and usage of the Chubanaki Canal waterway as a natural and cultural resources. The Corporate and Residential Services Committee recommends that council direct staff to interact with the Chubanaki Canal Commission to receive more information and have staff bring back a report to make a decision on their request for a letter of support for their effort to have the Chubanaki River designated as a Canadian heritage river. As Chair of the Committee, I so move.
Seconded by councillor Gerd. Is there any discussion on the motion? Question's been called. And the motion has passed unanimously.
Next, the presentation by the S P C A. Special Constable Joanne Landsberg, Chief Provincial Inspector with the Nova Scotia S P C A, and Special Constable Greg Hussey, Regional Manager with Nova S P C A, give a presentation on the update of the contract with East Hans, including enforcement over the past couple of years. There are no motions coming from the presentation. Next, twenty-twenty-three council calendar. The C A O presented the draft twenty-twenty-three calendar. The calendar was reviewed by the committee. The Corporate and Residential Services Committee recommends that council approve the draft twenty-twenty-three council calendar as drafted. As Chair of the Committee, I so move.
Seconded by councillor Mitchell, is there any discussion on the motion?
Question.
Question's been called. And the motion is passed unanimously.
Land issue, former Lance and Elmsdale school sites. Between the council workshop and executive committee decisions, staff heard council provide their feedback on the potential use of the former Elmsdale and Lance school sites. The Corporate and Residential School Services Committee recommends that council authorize staff to award F B M, Turner Drake, and Englobe an amount up to forty-one thousand seven dollars plus A S T to complete preliminary development consulting services for the former Elmsdale school site, P I D four-five-one-four-seven-nine-nine-eight, and former Lance school site, P I Ds four-five-one-four-eight-one-one-one and four-five-zero-eight-eight-six-one-four, and authorize staff to explore conceptual development options that include the Lance volunteer fire departments and the elementary school community tenants. As Chair of the Committee, I so move.
Seconded by councillor Tingley, is there any discussion on the motion? Question's been called. And the motion is passed unanimously.
Polling District Review. The Director of Planning and Development presented the fifth report on the polling district review that discussed current voter parity issues, proposed boundary adjustments to address them, and Phase Two public consultation. The Corporate and Residential Services Committee recommends that council authorize staff to proceed with the polling district review Phase Two public consultation using the preferred option, Foxtrot Bravo, and move the community of Five Mile River to District Five. As Chair of the Committee, I so move.
Seconded by councillor Green, is there any discussion on the motion? Question's been called. And the motion is passed unanimously.
Asset Management Policy. Under the Sustainable Infrastructure Section of the strategic plan, a key objective to establish a corporate asset management program that effectively manage municipal assets and plans for the long-term funding of the infrastructure needs of the community. The Corporate and Residential Services Committee recommends that council adopt the proposed asset management policy as attached to the November fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-two executive committee agenda. As Chair of the Committee, I so move.
You have a seconder?
Eli.
Seconded by councillor Musa. Any discussion on the motion?
Question.
Question's been called. And the motion is passed unanimously.
And the last item, Bylaw F one hundred dash eight, Amendments to Local Improvement Bylaw, will be dealt later in this meeting. As Chair of the Committee, I move the adoption of this report.
Seconded by councillor Mitchell, all those in favor? Contrary, motion is carried. Next on the agenda is the Planning Advisory Committee. Over to you, councillor Mitchell.
Planning Advisory Committee Report. The Committee held its regular meeting on November fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-two, in council chambers. The following motion is coming forward as a result of this meeting. Mixed Use Centre Review. Staff presented a fourth report on the mixed-use centre designation and zone in Enfield and Elmsdale and advised that the next step to move the issue forward would be the first reading of the draft amendments. The Planning Advisory Committee recommends that council give first reading to the amendments to the municipal planning strategy and land use bylaw, which changed the mixed-use centre M C designation and zone by restricting the height of new buildings in a prescribed area to three stories and require a minimum of fifty percent of the ground floor area of all new buildings be commercial. As Chair of the Committee, I so move.
Seconded by councillor Green. Is there any discussion on the motion?
Question.
Question's been called. And the motion is passed unanimously.
As Chair of the Committee, I move the adoption of this report.
Seconded by councillor Hibb, all those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary, motion is carried. Next, we will go to councillor Gerdin Cole for the report from the Infrastructure and Operations Committee. Councillor Gerdin Cole.
Thank you, Madam Warden. The Committee held its regular meeting on November fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-two, in council chambers. The following motions are coming forward as a result of this meeting. Number one is traffic calming. Public concern continues regarding speeding across East Hans. Recent efforts in traffic calming by the municipality have included online education campaigns, the launch of the rotating location digital speed display sign program, and last year's yard sign program for neighborhood advocacy. The Infrastructure and Operations Committee recommends that council approve the addition of a capital project for speed tables with spending approval of fifty thousand in two thousand and twenty-three, fifty thousand dollars in two thousand and twenty-four, and fifty thousand in two thousand and twenty-five to be funded from a reserve established from two thousand and twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-three year-end surplus if available or from debenture. As Chair of the Committee, I so move.
Moved and seconded, is there any discussion? Question's been called, we'll go to the vote. And the motion has passed unanimously. Over to you, councillor Gerd.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The Infrastructure and Operations Committee recommends that council approve the addition of a cap... The Infrastructure and Operations Committee recommends that council approve the addition of a capital project for speed tables with spending approval of fifty thousand... Is that a repeat? The Infrastructure and Operations Committee recommends that council approve the addition of a capital project for permanent digital speed display signs with spending approval of a hundred and twelve thousand in two thousand and twenty-three, a hundred thousand in two thousand and twenty-four, and twenty-three thousand in two thousand and twenty-five to be funded from a reserve established from two thousand and twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-three year-end surplus if available or from debenture. As Chair of the Committee, I so move.
Seconded by councillor Mitchell, is there any discussion on the motion?
Question.
Question's been called. And the motion is passed unanimously.
The Infrastructure and Operations Committee recommends that council have the draft of two thousand and twenty-three, twenty-four operating budget and ongoing include fifty thousand annually to go into a traffic calming reserve. As Chair of the Committee, I so move.
Is there any discussion on the motion? Question's been called. And the motion is passed unanimously.
As Chair of the Committee, I move the adoption of this report.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion is carried. Moving along, we will go to the Parks, Recreation, and Culture Committee Report. Councillor Rhino, over to you.
Thank you, Madam Warden. Committee held its regular meeting on November the fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-two, in council chambers. The following motions are coming forward as a result of this meeting. Chubanaki River Park Update. The Parks and Recreation and Culture Committee recommends that council direct staff to complete the current capital projects at the Chubanaki River Park and to not produce with, proceed, excuse me, with any further phases until projects related to the former Chubanaki residential site are completed. As Chair of the Committee, I do so move.
We have a seconder? Seconded by councillor Green, is there any discussion on the motion? Question's been called. And the motion is passed unanimously.
The Parks, Recreation, and Culture Committee recommends that council direct staff to place portable washrooms in the park for seasonal use and portable stages be used for community events once the existing washroom stage structure is removed following damage from a fire. As Chair of the Committee, I do so move.
Seconded by councillor Green, is there any discussion on the motion? Question's been called. Someone has not voted, folks. And the motion is passed unanimously.
Parks, Recreation, and Culture Committee recommend that council direct staff to dispose of the hall property under the disposal of surplus properties policy by a method recommended by council once a proposed subdivision at the Chubenagety River Park is approved and completed. As Chair of the Committee, I do so move.
Seconded by Councilor Musa, is there any discussion on the motion?
Question.
Question's been called. And the motion is passed unanimously.
The Parks, Recreation, and Culture Committee recommend that council direct staff to complete long-term lease with the Lions Club for a ten-year period with the group responsible for all repairs and maintenance associated with the building and surrounding landscape. As Chair of the Committee, I do so move.
Seconded by Councilor Mitchell, is there any discussion on the motion?
Question.
Question's been called. Waiting for someone to vote. And the motion is passed unanimously.
And also, the Parks, Recreation, and Culture Committee recommends that council direct staff to bring any management agreements related to the Chubenagety River Park ball field back to council before an agreement reached. As Chair of the Committee, I do so move.
Seconded by Councilor Musa, is there any discussion on the motion?
Question.
Question's been called. And the motion is passed unanimously.
Madam Warden, this brings me to the end of this report. As Chair of the Committee, I move the adoption of this report.
Seconded by Councilor Mitchell, all those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary, motion is carried. Next, we will go to the Agricultural Advisory Committee memo and feedback around the Weed Control Act changes. I see my name's down there for that. The Nova Scotia Department of Agriculture is proposing changes to the Agricultural Weed Control Act. As part of the process, Nova Scotia municipalities have been notified of the changes and have been asked if we have any questions or comments. The C A O has given the task of reviewing the amendments to the East Hands Agricultural Advisory Committee. Due to conflicting schedules, members of the A A C were unable to arrange a time to meet where a quorum would be achieved. Therefore, comments that have been provided on the Agricultural Weed Control Act are from individual members of the committee and not the committee as a whole. Comments were received as follows. Number one, no doubt it is an important topic, and perhaps with climate change, the pressure of weeds in agricultural and other landscapes will increase. Number two, I wonder what applicability the act has outside of farmland. There are some significant weeds that affect other landscapes. Will the revised act address these, or are they addressed in other ways? Number three, a draft of the changes was not provided, which makes it a bit difficult to provide informed comment. She notes that the act is being replaced but is not specific about what, if any, changes are proposed to the regulations. Number four, the proposed changes she describes sound like reasonable measures. Number five, I feel the amendments are a move in the right direction and should move forward, given the info for review regarding the changes. And number six, don't disagree with the proposed changes, but Nova Scotia agriculture should be providing more educational resources on how to control and eradicate the noxious weeds. A draft letter has been prepared for Nova Scotia agriculture but outlines some of the comments from A A C members. If council is satisfied with the content of the letter, then staff recommend that it be sent to Nova Scotia Agriculture. And the letter is in front of you. I would be looking for someone to... If you so wish, for someone to move that the correspondence be sent. Councilor Green.
We'd move that the correspondence be sent to Nova Scotia Agriculture.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on the motion?
Question.
Question's been called. And the motion has passed unanimously. Returning to the agenda, we are now at the time of second reading of Bylaw F dash one-hundred-dash-eight. Councilor... or Deputy Warden Perry.
At the October eighteenth executive meeting, the manager of accounting presented a report and draft bylaw as a result of... And as a result of the road gap paving project approved by council in February. At the November fifteenth executive committee meeting, the director of finance provided an update report with an addition to the bylaw to include an allowance for council to contribute more than ten percent in special circumstances at the direction of council. The Corporate and Residential Services Committee recommends that council give second reading to Bylaw F one-hundred-dash-eight, an amendment to Bylaw F one-hundred, Local Improvement Charges by law, to include road gap paving project, local improvements, and an amendment to Section nine point one-three to include contributing more than ten percent in special circumstances at the discretion of council. As Chair of the Committee, I so move.
Do we have a seconder? Heard someone, but I didn't hear who. Seconded by Councilor Mitchell, is there any discussion on the motion?
Question.
The question's been called. And the motion is passed unanimously. Ah, next on the agenda is the Warden's report. I was not prepared for that to come up so quickly. Bear with me, folks. Well, November was a particularly busy month, in my calendar at least, and I would say probably the busiest month I've had in the twenty-five years that I have been on council. Along with the... With the Counselor... or Deputy Warden... No, I'm sorry, I'm going to get mixed up on who attended what. Along with several other members of council and the C A O, I attended the Nova Scotia Federation of Municipalities' Fall Conference in Halifax. It was certainly, as always, a great opportunity for networking with other counselors around the province, and we did have some interesting presentations. And as the C A O alluded to earlier, I was pleased to accept my scroll of recognition for my twenty-five years on council. I attended a funding announcement by the province and the federal government at the Upper Nine Mall... at the Nine Mall River Community Hall on the seventh of November. And I have attended the plan update open houses on the eighth, the ninth, the fourteenth, the twenty-first of the month. As well as the twenty-second. So I've attended those meetings. I also attended a meeting in Upper Rodden on the sixteenth around what is going to happen around the Center Rodden Hall, which, as you all know, was struck by a truck a while back, and trying to work through what the process will be and what the community wishes to do around that hall. That, in a nutshell, is pretty much November. As I said, it was a very busy month, a lot of night meetings, most of them being the plan update meetings, but certainly valuable to attend and hear the conversation and the remarks in the different communities from all the folks who attended. So that would conclude my report, folks. Thank you. I'm sorry, I forgot to turn the chair over to you, Deputy Warden.
That's okay, Warden. There's no questions on your report. Take it away.
Thank you. Next, we will go to business from counselors, and I will start with Councilor Green.
I have nothing at this time, Warden.
Councilor Musa. Councilor Tingley.
Okay, I attended the Nova Scotia Federation of Municipalities Conference, November first to the fourth, with the Warden and other counselors. And I'd just like to congratulate Council Rhino and Warden Rolston once again for receiving the award for twenty-five years of good service to the municipality of East Hands. November seventh, I attended the Community Rider Funding Announcement with the Warden and some other counselors. November the ninth, participated in a Atlantic Canada Summit promoting guaranteed basic income. Counselor or Warden Rolston also attended that. November the eleventh, attended the ceremonies at the Senatab in Elmsdale, Remembrance Day. November the fourteenth, I was interviewed by... With... along with several other new counselors around the province by the Institute of Public Administrators for Canada regarding my experience in the last year as a counselor. Attended one rural zoning planning meeting in Milford on November the fifteenth. Attended a curling fundraiser on November the eighteenth. Just wanted to correct one thing that I had sent to council earlier. I mentioned that there was... they raised ten thousand at the auction. It was actually fifteen thousand. November the twentieth, attended the Milford Lions Club lighting of the Christmas tree and caroling and a Santa visit for the children. Other than that, just typical inquiries from residents. I did get a inquiry from one resident that's going to cause me to make a motion here tonight. Had a inquiry from a resident on Evergreen in Lance. He backs onto the new interchange in Lance, and what he was inquiring about is if the province was going to... Or the municipality was going to do anything about noise abatement. When he moved first... He said when he first built there, he was told by the planner that it would always be a green area, but I don't think there was a large green area, but all the trees between him and the interchange, I think, have been removed. So I'd like to make a motion or move that council request a letter be sent to the province to request a review of the noise mitigation options and technical requirements along Highway number one-oh-two from the Lance Interchange North to the end of where the house is back onto Highway number two... one-oh-two in Lance.
Do we have a seconder?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor... or Deputy Warden Perry, is there any discussion on the motion? Councilor Mitchell.
Yes, could Counsel Perry reread the motion? I couldn't... didn't hear the final ending.
Counselor Tingley will read the motion. Yeah, I'm going to move that council request a letter to be sent to the province to request a review of noise mitigation options and technical requirements along Highway one-oh-two from the Lance Interchange North to the end of where the house is back onto Highway number one-oh-two in Lance. So they're essentially looking for if there's anything can be done to mitigate the noise coming from the one-oh-two to the houses that back onto the highway there.
Any further discussion on the motion? Question's been called. And the motion is passed unanimously. Anything further, Councilor Tingley?
That's it for me.
Councilor Rhino.
Thank you, Madam Warden. I too attended several planning meetings on the seventh and eighth and twentieth and twenty-second of November. The only thing I have was brought to my attention that the heritage stone commemorating the Maitland Heritage Village in Maitland is falling in disrepair and is growing over in moss and whatever, and I would like to know if we could get that clean. Probably this is late in the fall, but if we could at the earliest part of the spring. So I'm asking staff, without making a motion right now, to do that. Good. Well, that's all for right now. Thank you.
Counselor Gergen Cole.
Thank you, Madam Warden. It has been a busy month. Firstly, I had the privilege of laying a wreath on Remembrance Day at the Senatab in Enfield. The ceremony was very well attended, as always, as residents paid their respects to those who served and those who gave their life serving. I too had attended numerous plan update meetings across the municipality, as well as a C C O A board meeting last week. I'm happy to report that the three-way stops have been installed in the White Estate subdivision as an effort to calm traffic, and residents were reaching out to me literally as they were being installed to express their appreciation of the stops to the municipality. So, well done. I'd like to also congratulate Warden Rolston and Councilor Rhino on their twenty-five years. That's an amazing achievement, and their experience on council is invaluable. Finally, we received a letter from the Enfield Fire Department this month requesting that council consider an increase in the Enfield fire levy from twelve cents to fourteen cents for the next fiscal. This increase is to financially plan for the future of a new fire hall. So on that note, I would like to make a motion that council approve, including a fire levy increase from twelve cents to fourteen cents per hundred dollars of assessment in the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four draft budget for the Enfield Fire Department for council consideration at budget time.
Seconded by Councilor Green, is there any discussion? Counselor Mitchell.
Yeah, just a question. When Elmsdale Fire Department went from twelfth and fourth, and they had to go to the community and get the community feeling, is that still a standard issue, or?
That's no longer... has not been required for a number of years.
Okay, thank you.
Is there any further discussion on the motion?
Question.
Question's been called. And the motion is passed unanimously. Anything further, Councilor Gergen Cole?
That's everything for me. Thank you.
Counselor Mitchell.
Thank you, Madam Warden. I too want to congratulate Counselor Rhino and yourself for your dedicated service to the municipality and the residents that you serve. I also personally want to thank Chief McNoble, now retired, for his service with the Elmsdale Fire Department and also with the Fire Chief Association. On November first, I attended the mixed-use presentation here at the Lord Mathen Center. On November the seventh, I attended the provincial volunteer awards on behalf of Norma McIntyre, who couldn't attend because of a death in the family, and she has received her award, her certificate, and is very grateful to the municipality. On November the eighth, the College of each hands library staff, had a professional development day in Truro, and also one of the members was recognized. I thanked them as the board chair for their dedicated service during COVID, and also the incentives and the, I guess, forward-thinking of them with the same-page initiative that is now in play. The next library board meeting was scheduled for the twenty-second on the calendar, but it has been moved to the thirtieth of this month on a Wednesday evening. The next is the F C M information for the directors. It is during the week of December sixth to the eighth in Ottawa. I have reserved my spot, I guess, so I'm coming to staff and also to counselors. They have asked a grouping request. to staff and also to councillors. They have asked a grouping request, and these are the choices of the groupings that I have to indicate which one I'd like. The first one is housing, affordability, supply and homelessness. The second one is the RCMP. The third one is climate mitigation and adaptation. And the fourth is infrastructure. I gave her my preference as housing affordability and infrastructure, but I told her that council met on Wednesday and I'd get back to her if council has other preferences I'd like to, for me to discuss with the parliamentarians and the MPs. So, council, what is your wish? I gave you two preferences that I'd like to be involved in, but that is not set in stone.
Deputy Warden Perry.
Thank you, Madam Warden. Just a question to the CAO, which could lead to it is, have we heard any more about the RCMP back pay? No. So, the CAO has indicated to me that there's been no indication of what's going to happen with the RCMP back pay. I would recommend or ask Counselor Mitchell if you could also look into the RCMP issue. That has dire financial stake for pretty much any rural municipality if they're forced to cover that full back pay amount from the current raise that was received by the RCMP.
I'll try to get MP Cody Boyce to answer that question while I'm there.
Excellent. Thank, 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 thank you. That's it for me.
Anything else? I threw it out to staff. Are the two choices that I have given acceptable, plus the RCMP?
I think.
I can.
Counselor Garton Cole.
Thank you, Madam Warden. No, I was just going to say, when he was listing them off quickly there, those were two that jumped out at me, so I'm fine with those. Thank you.
I think all the information that will be available is valuable information. I think we're all comfortable with your choices as a director or as a, as a representative at FCM.
Okay.
Counselor Eisner.
Thank you, Madam Warden. I did go to the Remembrance Day, which is a very large gathering. I mean, the COVID, the one before, it was pretty small, but it's amazing how many people are do, live in the community, can come out and support it. It's amazing. Went into NSFM in Halifax. That was interesting, for three days. It's good to see all the different politicians of all groups were all talking in one room. You don't get to see that too often. They generally are campaigning. I did enjoy talking to, on the round table, they had groups like that in the different rooms and you can talk about different problems, trying to keep doctors here, trying to keep nurses here. We're still bringing in a lot of nurses. I found out there's almost like a hotel in there, just housing nurses. Talked to CN, that was kind of cool because they have all this new technology, some crossings they don't even use lights anymore. It's amazing with the different information that you can get at. So I appreciate going to that. That's about it. Thank you.
Counselor, have.
Thank you, Warden. Just a few things here. I've attended the funding announcement for the Community Rider and it's great to see funding coming to this organization. They well deserve it. I attended the November 11th ceremonies at Elmsdale and I've attended all the open houses, planning meetings throughout the municipality so far. And I also attended the community meeting for Senator Rodden, Community Hall, and found it interesting in what, what the community members would like to see there. And also, I'd like to invite everybody to go to Nymal River Saturday night for their second annual tree lighting. So if you get nothing else to do and there's a little social gathering afterwards, I'd like to see you there. So, thank you.
Thank you, Warden. Yes, I'd like to go back to something I remiss in mentioning last month was that the truth and reconciliation meeting or ceremony at Indian School Road, there was an archaeologist who addressed the crowd about 6,000 years of use, habitation of the Chibinakiti River. Anybody that's interested in the Chibinakiti River, if you ever have a chance to hear this gentleman. And I wrote his name down, but I don't have it now, but I know he's an archaeo, pardon? Yes. Thank you, CAO. Yes, so if you have a chance of any interest in the Chibinakiti River, it was a very interesting presentation. Excuse me. I attended the Remembrance ceremonies in Chibinakiti, as usual, very well attended. We had a little problem with the PA system, so we were a little late getting started, but I thought it was kind of a bonus. Everybody in the crowd sang a quite a nice, rousing rendition of Oh Canada, instead of just listening to a recorded one. So, kind of the plus side. It was a nice service. A lot of wreaths were laid and there was a slight snafu, but there was one from municipality of Eastants, even though some people may not have thought I was there, but the wreath was already placed. And of course, just at the end of the ceremony, the container train came through and drowned us out at the end of it, but that's just normal for the ceremony in Chibinakiti, that happens. Also, on the November 11th, I re-attended the 75th anniversary of the Chibinakiti Legion Branch 111. It was a good turnout. It was nice to reflect on how important the legion has been in Chibinakiti and District Four in general. And like all legions, or a lot of legions, I should say, throughout the, throughout the country and the province, there's a bit of a struggle. So I'd like to see whatever we can do to help the legions in the community, because I know the Chibinakiti Legion over the years has been very important for the community, but things change and it's not as well used now. The membership's down, so hopefully they can keep it going. We had a nice meal. It was attended by the MLA, John McDonald, MP Cody Boyce, and I was able to present President Matthews with a certificate of recognition for the 75 years of the Legion in Chibinakiti. Yes, and of course, people are very happy. See that the playground installation has occurred and I see some people, children, hopefully, playing on it. Lots of adults mulling, milling around, I guess, with their children. So the park seems to be getting well used now. I see more use of it every day when I go by. Another, I thought was a quite important event occurred when the Shoe Mill 4H Club, two members of the club attended the Royal Winter Fair in Toronto as part of the Nova Scotia contingent. And they were Reed Eichlandboom and Emily Moxum, and they both did very well, I understand, showing their calves. I believe Reed achieved a fourth place, and I'm not sure exactly what, how Emily did, but my congratulations to Reed and Emily and the Shoe Mill 4H Clubs to be able to achieve this. Also, I had a meeting with Public Works Area Manager Robin Holmans to go over some things that, some issues that people have brought to my attention. I thank her for meeting with me and continue a good relationship with Public Works, even though it's a provincial organization or department. We don't have any municipal roads in District Four, so any issues with roads are Public Works. I also attended the, in Nymal River on November seventh, the hybrid auto announcement. So I'm glad to see that Community Rider is getting more efficient cars and it's part of the, the green plan for the province. And, yes, yes, that's, oh yes. And I did attend the planning meeting in Milford and talked to a few people afterwards that had some issues that they had good answers to. So very good with the meetings that people are getting, getting out and finding out about the, the planning in the rural areas. So that's everything for me. Thanks.
Over to you, Deputy Warden Perry.
Thank you, Madam Warden. I too attended the, the planning open houses on the eighth, ninth, fourteenth and twenty-second. And I want to commend staff on not only their presentation, but professionalism and their ability to help the residents and answer their, their questions that have, that have arise from these. Obviously, new planning to an area that doesn't have planning can stir up emotions and our staff handle themselves very professionally and I, I want to commend them for that. On the eighth, I also, along with Counselor Mitchell, was in Truro for the staff PD Day and the staff recognition. It was, it was great to see all the library personnel together. They had a wonderful day, talking to a bunch of them afterwards. It was the first time they'd been able to meet like this since the pandemic. And for people who don't know, there was a lot of responsibilities downloaded onto libraries during the pandemic, whether it was testing kits, passing out, drop off and takeaway from different, different devices, helping people book their appointments for, for immunization. So there was, there was a lot of stuff that they assisted with on top of the normal stuff as community hubs for, for most of the communities the libraries are located in. So it was good to get to see them get together, let their, let their hair down, laugh and learn a little bit. It was, it was a great afternoon. Also, had the opportunity to meet with two of the three MLAs that are in the area for my district, MLA Johnny McDonald and Brad Johns. Just brought up some issues, very similar to Counsel McPhee. Most of the roads in my district are all, are all provincial roads. So there was some issues with roads not being paved. It's getting darker earlier tonight, some safety concerns there, as well as heavy truck traffic and deterioration of, of other roads in the Mount Uniac area. They both said they would look, look, look into it and see what is going on. I look forward to hearing back. Other than that, good meeting with both of them. Very engaging. I also attended the funding announcement in Nymal River for the Community Rider. Community Rider has always been a very important partner for, for the municipality and it was great to see that the province and the federal government have, have recognized them as well and contributed to their ongoing success. Remembrance Day in Mount Uniac was a great turnout, 400 plus at our little Senatab there. One of the things that was an issue the last couple of years, even during the pandemic, was heavy truck traffic. We have a lot of quarries in Mount Uniac. We have a lot of, of independent contractors. There wasn't one truck that rolled by this year. Rumor has it, there was some discussion amongst those in the industry and they decided during that period of time, they were not going to run through that stretch of road and it went very well. So my thank you to, to, to those who took that initiative. It was definitely well received by the community. However, from that Remembrance Day ceremony, there was a community meeting on the 16th, less than a week afterwards. There's a committee being formed by the Mount Uniac Legion Branch 165. They're looking to create a veterans' park and a second Senatab in the community on Legion property, somewhere where it'll be a little bit safer. Our current location was put in in 1976. It's right on the number one, just for the train tracks. It's a very small parcel of land. We do not, we cannot get permission to shut down the road during the ceremony because it's trunk one. So traffic, young children, accessibility for veterans and those elderly just is not there. So they're looking to create a second Senatab that will have the ability for those who have mobility issues to watch it from the elevated balcony of the Legion, as well as it be a little more safer and out of the way for all that attend. So they're actively looking for volunteers for that committee. You can check out the Facebook page. There's a link there for anybody in the community that's interested. Also, as to echo the rest of council, congratulations, Counsel Rhino. Congratulations, Warden, on your 25 years of service to not only your, your communities, but the municipality as a whole. The municipality's changed a lot in 25 years and you guys were part of the force that drove that. Last but not least, it's a tough winter and holiday season is going to be upon us. There's lots of community fundraising going on, I would imagine, in every district. So I just would put the call out to anybody, if you can give and help your neighbor. This is probably one of the years you're, you're really going to want to try, try to do that. It's, it's going to be tough. There's already been quite a few cars off the road. I recommend, you know, help out our volunteer firefighters who are going and pulling people out of ditches and cars on the roofs and fender benders. Get your tires changed and, and slow down. Kids are still walking to school. And that's all I have. Thank you, Warden.
Thank you, Deputy Warden. Just before I move on, I would ask if you would, I, I will get to the folks who are asking to speak in a moment. I neglected to make a motion I was supposed to make in my warden's report, so I would turn the chair over to you.
Oops, go ahead, Warden.
The Department of Environment is accepting written feedback on the proposed CND guideline amendments until Friday, December the ninth, 2022. I would like to move that council write a letter to the provincial government outlining our concerns with the proposed amendments and request additional analysis be done on the overall greenhouse gas emissions impact and the financial impact of increased transportation and tipping fees to the Nova Scotia taxpayer.
Seconded.
Been moved in second. Those that can speak, is it towards this or for something else? Something else? Be looking for the question.
Question.
Question's been called. We'll go to the vote. And the votes are in and it has passed unanimously.
And just before, Mr. Deputy Warden, I'd also acknowledge that I did, I did miss mentioning that I did attend the service in West Gore on Remembrance Day, which was very well attended with, from babes in arms to young children, teenagers, like all age groups were well represented. And I'd also just like to put an invitation out there for Saturday between the hours of 11:00 and 1:00. There will be a brunch at the Upper Rodden Fire Hall for anyone who is interested in attending. The first one they've had since COVID, so, thank you.
Thank you, Warden. Back to you.
Counselor Green.
Thank you. Just one thing I did miss. Our tree lighting will be December 4th in Knoll, in front of the seniors' hall. And where is it in Nymal River, Eldon?
The Community Center.
Community Center? Okay, that's all, Warden.
Counselor Rhino.
Yes, I neglected to mention that I attended the Remembrance Day service at Maitland Senatab with close to 200 people and it was a huge turnout. And I would like to thank Staff Sergeant Corey Bushel for his attendance. Thank you.
Counselor Musa.
Thank you, Madam Warden. I, I want to wish the Canadian team a better luck. They outplayed the best team in the world, the second best team in the world today. And I call it an upset that Belgium won the game. It's a shame, but hopefully, if they play like that, they're going to go further in the tournament and go Canada, go.
Thank you. Okay, that concludes business from councillors. We do have some in-camera items. We have two land issues and one brief enforcement update. So I would be looking for a motion to go in camera.
So moved?
Moved by Counselor Green, seconded by Counselor Mitchell. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary, motion is carried. We will give staff time to stop the live feed and put our sign on the door and you can let us know when we're ready. put our sign on the door and you can let us know when we're ready.
So I would report that we met in camera to discuss a couple of land issues and enforcement issue. And out of those discussions, staff was given direction or motions coming forward. So I would be looking to set the time and date of the next council meeting, December the 13th, 2022, regular meeting of council for policy and December 21st for the regular meeting of council.
Moved second.
Moved in second. Did all those in favor?
Aye.